And this is the Monday, March 2nd, 2020, meeting of the Radnor Township Planning Commission. Let us start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our own nation, our own government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the minutes of the February 3rd, 2020, meeting of the Planning Commission. Does anybody have any revisions, edits, et cetera, to the minutes? I don't hear any, so would somebody please make a move? All in favor? Thank you. The minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is 117 South Radnor Chester Road, a minor final subdivision plan. Is the applicant here?
Yes. Would we be able to get the screen on?
Can we get the screen turned on? There it is. Our screens aren't coming on.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a technical difficulty with that. They're working on that.
Good evening. I'm George Brosman. I'm an attorney representing the applicant in this matter, which is an entity that has the property at 117 South Radnor Chester Road under agreement. Tom Bentley is the principal of that entity, and he'll be going over the proposed plan after I make my introductory remarks. This application was filed, I believe, back in September with the township. The property's zoned R3 Residence District, and a three-lot subdivision was filed back at the end of September. There were various reviews that came in, and various changes were made to the plan, and we have review letters from Gannett Fleming and Gilmore Associates. They're pretty clean letters. This is a minor subdivision plan. This plan complies with all of the R3 Residence District standards, and I want to show you the zoning map for the area. This is the larger version of the map that we worked from, and then this is a blow-up of the area in question. What we have here is this R3 zoning, which is this darker yellow. That's a better way to put it. So Lancaster Avenue is running along the top here where my finger is. Radnor Chester Road runs past the high school here, crosses Route 30, and comes out here to Conestoga Road. Of course, the Radnor Trail runs along here, and it ends here where there's a walkway that goes along the opposite side of Radnor Chester Road. This is the site here marked 117. As I understand it, along the old railroad line, there is a proposal to one day extend the Radnor Trail. And what we wanted to show here was, basically, there's a pocket of R3 residential zoning located between Lancaster Avenue and the trail, essentially. This is Sinclair Drive. You can see these properties were built out, pretty much, in accordance with the R3, which has 10,000 square-foot lots. And then there's a pocket of R3 on the opposite side of Radnor Chester Road where the subject property is, and that extends down past the Blue Root interchange. Interestingly, as you go past the trail and the possible extension of the trail on Radnor Chester towards Conestoga, the zoning changes from R3 to R1. The R1 is the lighter yellow. R1 is a, you know, a district that requires larger lots. So orienting this in a similar fashion, this is a blow-up. Again, you have Lancaster Avenue running along here, a blow-up on the R3 area, and the subject property is marked here at 117 Radnor Chester Road, again, R3. And Tom's office went and just put some of the lot sizes of the lots in the R3 district. As I said, in the R3 district, the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet. This property has enough area, just by area alone, probably to fit more like four lots, but the plan, by the time you comply with the width requirements and things like that, has three lots. And some subdivisions that I've been involved with over the years, you know, it's tight to fit in the lots, but in this case, that's not the case. You'll see on the plan, R3 has 10,000 square-foot minimum. Every lot in this development is substantially larger than that. The proposed three lots run from 1.4, 1.5 to 1.6 times larger than the minimum lot size. So these lots are well in excess of the R3 Residence District standards, and the plans comply with all of the area and bulk requirements for the R3 district. With that, I would have Tom go over the proposed plan.
So, hi, Tom Bentley. Nice to meet you. Been building in your township for 44 years. Just did the math before I came over here. Can we blow this up? So I did this. So I put on here all the ones that were equal to our lots or smaller. And all the way down Lancaster Pike at the, near the Blue Root, there's a section down there also that has smaller lots than we are that's also in the R3. Can everybody see that? So... Right here, this lot right here is 11,000 square feet, and I didn't, one of the lots over here is 10,000. I didn't get that on there. But these are all smaller than what we're talking about. I know there's some neighbors here that are upset about what we're doing, but we thought we had done what we were supposed to do. So we came in a number of times and met with the township. We changed the plans two or three times. So the old house is right about here, and we were going to try and fix it up, but when we looked at it, it was in pretty bad shape, so we decided that we should just tear it down. It had some mold and stuff, and, you know, sometimes you just don't know how far that goes. But our intention was originally to save that and then to have two new houses, but... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Our intention was to keep the original house because I thought it was kind of cute, but it had bad mold in it, and we just thought it was best to tear it down. We looked at the cost to fix it up, and it was just too much. Anyway, so the concept here was to have three smaller, cute, kind of carriage home-type homes, and, you know, we weren't trying to build like, you know, 5,000 square-foot homes here. We probably could, but the idea was just to have a little kind of enclave of homes there that are very small in profile, and we're going to try and keep the roofs down and basically make it look good. And so we came in a number of times. We met with the township, and, you know, ready to make our presentation two months ago, and all of a sudden, there was a lot of neighbors that were upset about it. And, you know, I understand, but, you know, some of those neighbors tried to buy the property also. So, you know, we went back to the drawing board because the township asked us to widen the right-of-way, which typically a widening of the right-of-way is required for, you know, when you really increase the traffic in some way, shape, or form. And we didn't think we were. Nobody identified that as a problem before we did all our plan revisions. However, we were threatened with that, and we went back to the drawing board for the fourth time. And basically, you know, this is a PennDOT road also, and PennDOT would literally have to ask for this to be paved or widened because it is their road. It's not township road. So this is a plan we came up with that we can basically have a byright plan that has the widen right-of-way. We do not think this is a good plan. This would take down all the trees that are in the front of the property, and the property does have some nice trees in the front. It would require, you know, you come down two lane, all of a sudden it widens to two and a half or three lanes, and then as soon as it gets to this next property, it goes back down to two lanes again. This seems absolutely ludicrous to me that we would be asked to do this, but this is what was presented to us as kind of a stopgap to stop our efforts. We can do it. We think it's a worse plan. It also pushes this house further back into the back of the property. There's some mature trees back there that would have to be taken down. We don't want to build this plan, but, you know, we can, we will. We think it's worse for the neighborhood. Right now, what we want is to have three cute little homes with the trees in front, and we would give the neighbors some extra buffering. We've already shown a lot of landscaping on here that we're not required to do because it's a minor subdivision. You know, my subdivisions always have more landscaping than they're required to because I like landscaping. I think it makes the property look good. I think it gives a lot more value to the property. And so really, we're just asking for a common-sense decision here, and we don't see what it's all about. I understand, you know, some of the comments I've heard from the neighbors is that we're ruining the neighborhood. No offense, but I don't really see it. This is a neighborhood. We're fronting on Radnor Chester Road. You know, there's a fair amount of traffic there. It's a great location. I mean, it's in the center of the township. It's easy to get places. It's, you know, we think it's a good place to be. We're planning on building houses for under $1 million in Radnor Township. What a unique proposition. We think it's something that's needed and something that's worthwhile. We think this presents a much better plan for anybody that's driving by. You know, there's a pretty good buffer along our property lines already, but we'd be happy to add to that some more buffers if that would make everybody happy. I don't want to, I don't want to fight, but I will if I have to. That's pretty much it. You know, we're asking for an approval tonight for this plan, and it's been reviewed by all your consultants, so I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
What was the rationale to widen the road, widen Radnor Chester?
To stop this development.
But who?
Maybe I could address that, Tom.
What is the genesis of it? Who asked?
I can address that. There's a code provision. I'll put it out on the table in your subdivision and land development ordinance. It's section 25525, no, 27, which deals with streets, and there's a chart here. And you can see above the chart, before I get to that, there's types of roads, major collector, and Radnor Chester Road is a major collector road. When you go down to this chart, specific standards for streets, major collectors, right-of-way 80 feet, cartway 48 feet. And then it says in four down here, where a subdivision of butts or contains an existing street of inadequate right-of-way width, by inadequate, I assume they mean that it's not as wide as the chart says, where a subdivision of butts, a street of inadequate right-of-way, the Board of Commissioners may require the reservation or dedication of rights-of-way to conform to the above standards. I don't read that as a requirement. It was raised in the review letters by the reviewers, just pointing out that it is in there. I read the language to say that's something that the commissioners can make a decision on. We haven't been to them yet. I think the staff is assuming that is what they would require, and we did have a staff meeting where we were advised that the township was going to require that. So if you put our plan out here, I marked it up. I don't know if you can blow this up. This is from the plan set. But Radnor Chester Road... Yeah, Radnor Chester Road has a 40-feet-wide right-of-way at present. That's marked here on the plan. That's the right-of-way. And what that means practically is that 20 feet of the right-of-way is on the property's side, and 20 feet is on the other side. We offered to provide five additional feet of right-of-way, which is this line here. If the township required the full 80 feet, that would be this blue line of right-of-way. I did not mark on here what the cartway width of 48 feet would be, but it would be significantly wider. As Tom pointed out, this is a PennDOT road, so I think it would be up to PennDOT whether PennDOT would allow the widening. But when you turn to 25524C, where literal compliance with the standards specified herein is clearly impractical, the Board of Commissioners may modify or adjust these standards. So if you assume that's a requirement, the way that it's worded, and I don't believe it is, it says they may require it. I believe they, if they were going to require it, they would have to give a reason. That is not arbitrary. But it's clearly impractical to widen this road here. If you go by the property, there's a guardrail right there. There's a drop in grade. The property is down lower, and there is a substantial amount of vegetation. So widening the road would wipe out a lot of vegetation. There'd be a lot of earth disturbance that's not needed, and ultimately, it would be up to PennDOT. I drove the whole length of Radnor Chester Road just before the meeting. I've done it many times over the years, of course, but if you go down Radnor Chester Road, it would be out of character. There'd be this one little widened part, if PennDOT would even allow it, in front of the property. And I think adding two homes to a lot that already has one home, the traffic impact of this would be imperceptible on Radnor Chester Road and at the two nearest signalized intersections of Radnor Chester and Lancaster and Radnor Chester-Conestoga. What Tom did do, I think, which is a good thing, and I'm sure PennDOT will agree, he's proposing a common driveway. So even though there's two new homes being added here, you can see that there would be a common driveway, so there'll be no additional driveways onto Radnor Chester Road. And like I said, we believe this subdivision does not warrant the additional right-of-way or the widening. So we believe if it is required, it would make sense to waive that. It's impractical. It would just lead to more disturbance, more impervious coverage, damage of the trees. And as Tom said, if you, if you, it depends on the timing of when the right-of-way would be accepted, but that could push these front-yard setbacks back, and that might just result in pushing the homes further back towards the neighbors in the rear. A lot of times when I'm involved in subdivisions, you know, a township wants to know, is your plan viable, or are you using waivers to make a plan viable? That's why Tom had the other sketch done. That sketch by Bob Huser, a land planner, shows that, you know, if the township required that additional right-of-way and you applied the setbacks, that the plan would still be viable. You can still get three lots. You can still fit three homes on them. And then the other thing I'll note is, in my experience, this type of, I'm not even sure if I should call it a waiver, but if it is a waiver, these are routinely granted. There's any number of subdivisions that I've been involved in that have been, come before the township where additional right-of-way and road widening is not required. This was a plan our engineer was involved in. Also on Radnor Chester Road, there were three new lots proposed on Eithon Creek. Here's Radnor Chester. As far as we can tell, as far as the engineer remembered, no additional widening was required for that plan. And I believe there are many others, others that I've been involved in, even on major collector roads, where it wasn't required. It's quite funny that we don't think it makes sense. Again, all you're going to be doing is adding more impervious, disturbing vegetation, and then you're going to have this goofy, wide part of Radnor Chester Road. I'm not even sure PennDOT would approve of it.
The five, excuse me, the five extra feet that I see mentioned here, additional five-foot right-of-way for a total of a 45-foot ultimate right-of-way. This is on page two of Rogers' December 30th, 2019 memo under the subdivision and land develop, land development heading. See what I'm referring to?
Yes, his review letter.
Well, where would the five feet go, if you could kindly point that out to us?
So...
I'm looking at, I'm familiar with the area myself, and isn't there a drop-off where that barrier is located, the metal barrier?
Yeah, there is a driveway, so...
No, drop-off, the drop.
So what we're showing here is a five feet of the right-of-way, making the right-of-way bigger. That's the second line back here. We're not proposing to widen it by five feet. We're just saying we would give five feet of right-of-way without, you know, compensation. So if there was a time when somebody wanted to do a little something to the road, PennDOT, there would be a little extra right-of-way, but we weren't proposing any widening there. The other thing I should note is generally, when you require a right-of-way, there has to be just compensation paid for that. None has been offered.
On that note, the right-of-way, the increase in the amount of right-of-way, what is the logic behind that? I mean, what's driving that? I mean, I can imagine it's more cars, but it doesn't seem likely with adding two houses where there's one house now. It doesn't seem, it seems like the logic is faulty to me, unless you can...
We agree. We're not proposing it, I believe, and I don't want to speak for the reviewers. I think the reviewers just were noting that this is a requirement in the ordinance, and the commissioners might require it. So they're, you know, they do a good job of raising the issues that are in the code. So it was in the review letters. We did have a private meeting with the staff, and we were told that they wanted it, but, so I can't speak for them or why they do, but generally, I think it should relate to some impact of the...
Well, the reason I bring it up is I'm on Shade Tree. I'm the liaison to Shade Tree, and we don't need to lose any more trees for no reason in this township. That's number one. Number two is, I'll trade a lane of street that's not going to be used for mature trees. It does, to me, as a Shade Tree representative, I don't, you haven't been before us yet, but you will come before us. We're not going to be happy about taking these trees out.
I'm told, and it says in the review letter, that this was approved by Shade Tree.
Yeah, but, yeah, but I looked at, I was, I'm on the Shade Tree Commission. You guys did not come before us. I don't know why that said that. That's a mistake, unless I totally forgot that you guys were there.
I believe they went, but we're in totally agreement. We don't want to widen the road. We want to keep the trees. We don't think it's needed, so we agree with you.
But I just want, I just want to say for the record, I watched every, I attend these meetings, and I watched every meeting, and you guys did not present.
Okay. I'm just, I didn't go, so I just saw that comment in the letter.
And that's fine, because you have to come before us eventually anyway, so...
George, just to be sure, you're not going to, you don't want any compensation for the five feet, and all the five feet's going to be on your side? So it's going to be 20, 20 to one side and 25 to the other?
That's right.
Okay.
So when I looked at this plan, I see that the setback requirement, that the right-of-way requirement is really about setback. It's not about widening the road. And when I looked at, I actually have a previous version of the plan that I'm looking at. I don't, I don't have the most current one. But it appears that that third house is closer to Radnor Chester Road than any house that's been built in the past 70 years in that portion of the road. And so I think it has less to do about widening the road and more about the setback, because if those setbacks that were on the sketch were enforced, that third house, I don't think would fit the lot size. So I guess my question is...
You're talking about the third house on the right?
The far right.
The far right, okay.
Right. So with this plan, all of the houses fit within that new setback for the expanded right-of-way. This one does.
Yeah, that's why we did this other plan. This plan shows that homes could be built that would meet those setbacks. Even if you took, even if you purchased the additional right-of-way, the setbacks would move back. This is a lane that I drew on here. This blue line would be where the right-of-way would be, and then these dotted blue lines would be the increased setbacks. And then this plan shows that the subdivision would still be viable. Homes could fit. As I said, you know, they probably tend to push them back, and there are neighbors back here that didn't want that, so...
We had a really similar project to this a month or two ago on a major collector road that the right-of-way on the plan was listed differently from the requirement. It was the exact same section of code in SALDO that we were looking at, and what the developer ended up doing was conforming to those setbacks, but the road didn't need to be expanded. The setbacks just needed to be conformed to. So is that what we're looking at here, Steve? Is that it's more of a setback issue than a road expansion issue?
We just discussed the items in the review letter, so it's not about anything specific. It's just the items in the review letter on the right-of-way.
I think, just to be clear, there's two requirements. There's a requirement for an ultimate right-of-way, and then there's a requirement for the width of the road. And I think based on Rogers' review letter that the plan didn't meet either requirement. Is that correct? So the applicant is looking for waivers for both of those requirements, the width of the road as well as the ultimate right-of-way width.
But, so there is another option to this subdivision other than having three lots. It could be built without a waiver if it's less than three lots.
It could be built without a waiver and still be three lots, because our lot sizes are so much larger. That was the purpose of this Huser plan. We think artificially increasing the setbacks is a bad idea because it pushes the houses back. The closest neighbors are here and here, pushing them back. This is just going to be the trail. Pushing them back, we don't think is a good idea. There's an ample setback provided on the plan that we have. And if you look in the SALDO, I know they do connect, but when you read the part about the SALDO here about the widths, it's not talking to establish, they're not requiring these right-of-ways and this road widening to make a bigger setback. That's a zoning thing. It may be a result of it, but the reason a township or PennDOT seeks a wider right-of-way or a wider road widening is not to make somebody have a larger setback, with all due respect. It's supposed to be, you know, a traffic-related issue, some need to make the road wider.
George, let me see if I understand it. Just, you could, you could build the three houses, widen the road, but the cost of doing that would be moving the houses further back on the lot, still staying within the boundaries, the setbacks, front, rear, and sides. Okay? The road would have to be widened, and all the trees in the front would be taken down.
That's right.
You can do that by right. Is that, did I say that right?
I'm assuming PennDOT approval of the road widening, yes.
Right. So you can do that by right.
That's right.
Or you could get the waiver and do a 45, a 40-foot, 45-foot right-of-way and the existing cartway, leaving all the trees up, moving the houses in closer to the road, giving more backyard and less space.
That's right.
Okay? Is that, that's kind of what we, what they're asking for us to do?
Yes.
You can do it by right, but that's less desirable to the roadway, the neighborhood, and the project, but you could do it.
Yes, that's our position. And there's, you know, hardships, the grade, the guardrail. So we think they would also be factors of why the road should not be widened.
So George, does the 80-foot, the 80-foot right-of-way is not on the Radnor Township plan?
When you say the Radnor plan...
I mean, does it, is the 80-foot line on the adjacent properties?
No, I don't, I don't have a plan of that, but from driving Radnor Chester Road for all these years, I don't believe it's 80 feet wide right-of-way. all these years, I don't believe it's 80-feet-wide right-of-way on that segment between Lancaster and Conestoga Road. I don't believe they have an 80-foot right-of-way, and they certainly don't have a 48-feet cartway.
The wide part of that road is where you make the right-hand turn to the township building. After that, it goes down the two lanes all the way out to Conestoga.
Right. And there's a lot of physical constraints, just like on our property. You know, as you go down Radnor Chester Road, there's walls, there's bridges, there's guardrails, so, you know, it's not likely that even if, if you made this goofy little widened area here, that someday the rest of Radnor Chester would get widened. There's all those constraints there, so I, I don't think it makes any sense to widen that, for many reasons.
So I guess my question is, can you conform to the required setbacks without widening the road?
Yes, that's why we did this plan.
Right. But that plan shows that you widen the road and you take out all the trees. I mean, can you just conform to the setbacks without disturbing the trees?
Well, the plan that we filed conforms with all of the setbacks. What you're asking, I think, is, you know, impose a greater front yard setback on yourself as if you had donated the right-of-way, the larger right-of-way. That could be done, but that is not desirable, as we said. You know, that would just push these homes back here.
Sure. But you wouldn't need a waiver, right?
The simple thing is that everybody's mixing up the extra right-of-way and putting a road in.
Right.
Okay? We can give the biggest right-of-way you'd need, and it can sit there forever and never be used, and we not widen, widen the road. Okay? But we think it's a better plan, the, the plan that we originally submitted, we think it's better for these people, because they have more of a backyard and not squished into the back. But we can give you five feet, do the houses where we originally did them on the plan that we are, currently have submitted, or we can do this new plan. I've done four plans for the subdivision, so this is making the record for the least number of houses with the most plans. This plan has the right-of-way, we don't have to pave it. I mean, I know, I think paving is absolutely crazy. But, you know, your staff brought this up, and I think some of this, I'm not trying to point fingers, but some of this is in response to all the neighbors that are here, that, you know, you got to stop this, we're putting three houses on an acre, acre point, 1.4 acres. So this was the thing that was kind of designed to make us go away. We're not going away. We have a right to do this, and, and the landowner is here tonight, and she's got a right to get three lots. So, I mean, but we don't have to put the road in.
Well, I guess I just, I, I'm trying to tease out some of the options here, because giving a waiver for something that could be done without one sets a precedent that...
You do it...
I'm hesitant to, to agree to, so I'm just, I'm, I'm just wondering, is there a way to do this without a waiver?
So I, I built this little job here on Radnor Chester Road.
Okay.
And this is Radnor Chester Road here. Need a bigger microphone. Does this come out? Am I still on? Okay.
No.
So, here's Radnor Chester Road, I built this house right here, and we didn't have to put in any right-of-way extra. That's exactly what, this was five or six years ago. There was no extra right-of-way given, right here, this is existing right-of-way. And, am I not coming through?
And was there, was there a waiver needed for the setback?
Yes, yes. It happens all the time. I've been doing this for years, and, you know, if you don't need a right-of-way, you just get a waiver. I mean, it's not a big deal.
I've been involved in a subdivision on Eagle Road, which is a major collector, and, you know, the same waivers were given. People, you know, they don't need the wider right-of-way, and certainly don't want that widening, that disturbance. And I'm sure if I dug around, I would find many. These are routinely granted.
So, so are there any other properties on Radnor Chester Road that have an 80, this 80-foot wide?
I don't believe so. On this segment between Lancaster and Conestoga, I don't believe so. And certainly, the road is not widened. If you drive down there, as Mr. Falcone said, it's wider right at the mouth of Lancaster before you go into Sinclair. But the rest of it is, you know, a narrow road. And like I said, if this piece was widened, I doubt PennDOT would allow it, because it would be just an odd piece. It's not like the rest of Radnor Chester's going to get widened someday, and this is just waiting to be a link in it. There's all those same kind of physical constraints that we have, as you go down that segment. So I don't believe anybody else has it, or has been required to do it in that segment.
I, I just don't see the value of a right, 80-foot right-of-way on one property. I don't quite understand that, so...
I think it's more that that's what the ordinance reads, so that's, that's what staff goes by. Whatever the ordinance is, and that's why they come in front of us and ask for waivers to an existing ordinance, because the houses there are so many years before. I, I think that's kind of basically what's, what the story is here.
I understand that part, I just don't understand the reason.
I think if somebody were to try and do this on another property, this, this, this would pop up again, where you need 80-foot. So it's not going to come until somebody wants to do something, and that, and since it's a new thing, they got to comply to current ordinance regulations. Any further questions or comments from the members of the commission? There's just a couple of items. Let's try and clean up a couple of items that might be, will comply. On page two of Roger Phillips' December 30th, 2019 memo, I see that you, you submitted your planning module, but that'll, that'll come up in due course. Under stormwater, there was a discrepancy, has that been corrected?
I believe our engineer spoke with Roger. Our, our engineer wasn't able to be here this evening, so I don't know if you recall Roger?
Yeah, we've, we've spoken a couple of times, and there's, there's a couple more shots at this, and before this thing gets approved, it'll be, everything will be worked out. The final, the final stormwater plan is approved at the grading permit phase.
Correct.
But we'll work all this out before it gets to the commissioners.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll take public comment now. We'll take public comment. Please step up to the mic and tell us who you are, please.
I'm Jim Greenfield. I'm an attorney representing 20 property owners on Radnor Chester and Meadowcrest Roads, and on Chulane and Browns Lane. And I'll be happy to explain to you why we think the waiver should not be granted in this situation. I think if you look at the density of this proposed development, I think it's fairly easy to conclude that it's incongruous in a neighborhood of stately homes and fairly expansive lots. But putting that aside for a moment, the Planning Commission has already alluded to a couple of the technical issues with it, although one that has not yet been mentioned is the safety issue, in terms of the site distances that are available on the existing driveway as it comes out onto Radnor Chester Road. I'm sure you all know that Radnor Chester Road is hazardous to, to begin with. It's narrow, even though it has a 25 mile an hour speed limit, people on a regular basis exceed that and go 35 or even faster. And in fact, if you look at the review letters, in calculating the required site distance, there's actually a, an assumption that traffic is going to be moving at a prevailing speed of 35 miles an hour. So that's something to pay attention to. The road is not only narrow, it has blind curves, and it can be hazardous for drivers and for pedestrians in the area of the trail. Now, adding to the safety issues in the immediate vicinity of this property is the fact that I think under the last plan for the trail, the trail is going to directly cross Radnor Chester Road before it goes on to the east side of Radnor Chester to use the piece of the railroad bed that has not yet been converted to trail use. And if you combine the speed of the traffic with the limited site distances, and pedestrian and bicycle traffic that's going to be crossing Radnor Chester Road at some point in the future, you have significant safety issues on this street that may not exist on any of the other collectors that have been discussed so far tonight. The, looking, looking for a moment, if we may, at 25527C, which is the section that requires the, the cartway and the right-of-way on, on various types of streets, including major collectors. The operative subsections, really, are subsection one, which requires a 48-foot cartway and a right-of-way of 80 feet. And by the way, our interest in the right-of-way really has little to do with the width of the cartway. I think under ideal circumstances, the cartway would be wider down most of Radnor Chester Road. But we're not suggesting to the Planning Commission, and then eventually to the board, that the road itself be widened. But for reasons I'll explain, the right-of-way width is crucial in this particular area. So if you look at subsection one, that's where the, that's where the basic requirements for cartway and right-of-way are set. And then, as I think George mentioned, in subsection four, it says that when you have a subdivision on a street with inadequate right-of-way, the Board of Commissioners may require the reservation or dedication of rights-of-way to conform to the above standards. And then, actually, the Board also has latitude, the township has latitude under subsection, two of the same section of ordinance, to require additional right-of-way in order to secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers. Well, here you do have other safety issues that are at work, primarily traffic conditions and future pedestrian and bicycle traffic. So the waiver request, as we see it, applies to both subsections one and four. And in fact, the applicant has made a waiver request. So this is precisely the type of situation for which 25527C was designed. It was intended to provide protection to the public and to the township, in case you have a safety issue that potentially requires remediation. And the right-of-way can provide flexibility for the township to do that remediation. Here you have a road that's not even close to providing the required right-of-way. It's 20 feet short, as we sit here now, on the 117 side of the street. And the applicant has offered us an additional five-feet of right-of-way, but that's utterly inadequate to design any kind of a solution that might alleviate safety concerns, both, well, particularly for pedestrians on the trail. At some point, the township is going to have to deal with the issue of how you have pedestrians safely navigating in that area, those that are using the trail, and those that are coming from Lancaster Avenue to the area of the trail so that they can use it. At the very least, the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners should require an additional 15 feet of right-of-way beyond what the applicant has offered. And actually, if you look at the, and I think the, the Planning Commission alluded to it a little bit earlier, there is a drop-off from the road area down to the property. So five-feet's not going to help you provide sidewalks or something else in that area to make it safe for pedestrians and bicyclists. You're going to need more than that. And I, I think at the very least, it should be required that the applicant provide the additional 15 feet of right-of-way, so that at least on that side of Radnor Chester Road, you're meeting the requirement that's set forth in the code. If the township...
Oh, then make the total with the, the cartway, then?
Well, we're, we're not talking about widening the cartway. The right-of-way, it's, you don't necessarily need to widen the cartway just because you have the right-of-way. The right-of-way, in, as we envision it, would be available primarily to provide for safety measures in that area. So you don't, I, I mean, it, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with the applicant's suggestion, that it makes no sense to widen the cartway in this restricted area and not along the rest of the road. But what the right-of-way gives the township the latitude to do is to determine, for example, that it might want to put a sidewalk or some other type of pathway on the 117 side of the road.
If PennDOT said that was okay.
Excuse me?
If PennDOT approved it.
If, I, I'm assuming that PennDOT, I don't know that PennDOT would need to approve the addition of a walkway or sidewalk in that area if the road itself is not being widened.
Should we do this all the way down the whole street, do you think? Take that 15 feet all the way along the western side of Radnor Chester Road?
I'm not suggesting that that be done.
Well, I mean, if you, what, what good would it be to have it for this 100 feet of frontage of this property, and have it take all the way down? What, what safety, what safety's enhanced by that?
Well, you have, first of all, it's 300 feet of frontage, almost, along Radnor Chester.
Okay, well, how long is, how long is Radnor Chester Road, from Lancaster Avenue to Conestoga?
Well, I'm not sure of the full length of it, it's possibly four to five tenths of a mile.
So what would 300 feet, what, what would 300 feet accomplish?
What it accomplishes is that you're going to have people coming from Lancaster Avenue to use the trail. And you want to get those people to and from Lancaster Avenue safely.
But isn't, isn't there a walkway there? Isn't there a walkway in front of, on the western side from, from the parking lot where, I forget the name of that office building is? Isn't there a walkway there that leads to the, and then the crosswalk is, is north of that?
I think part of that area is covered by walkway, yes. I'm not sure that the entire stretch...
I think it runs to the parking lot, doesn't it? And, and the crosswalk from east to west is there?
But, you know, the, the, the reason why it's particularly important on this property is that this is where, this property is where Radnor Chester Road meets the trail extension. And you want to be able to get people to that trail extension safely. The township needs to preserve the latitude to do that. If other properties come up between the trail and Lancaster Avenue where consideration of an expanded right-of-way is, is possible, then I think it's something that needs to be looked at. But if you're going to try to get full use out of the trail, and you anticipate that people are coming to use it, then you have to try to make it a fully safe situation for them. And, and unless you have this additional right-of-way, there's no real viable solution on that side of Radnor Chester Road. So it's, it's that intersection of the trail and the 117 property and Radnor Chester Road that create an ideal opportunity for the dedication of additional right-of-way to manage safety solutions. And, you know, if you, if you, if you decide not to require the right-of-way now, the township is forever going to give up the ability to make that call. Once it's gone, once you give the waiver here, the township won't be able to devise any solutions to promote safety in this area.
In speaking on behalf of all the neighbors, can you summarize for us what the neighbors feel are the important factors to allow this to occur? Have you focused on this one item? Is that the only item that the neighbors have? Can you, can you summarize that just briefly, and then if you want to elaborate further? I'm just having a hard time understanding what the factors are besides this one.
Well, the safety factor is, is what we believe requires the additional right-of-way. If you're looking for other factors relating to this application, one factor that the applicant has not yet satisfied the township on, as you'll note in the review letters, is the, is the site distance question. As you come out of that driveway and you look north toward Lancaster Avenue, as currently constituted, there's only 250 feet of site distance, and 275 feet are required, as, as the review letters say. And one solution that's been proposed to that is to knock down a couple of trees immediately to the right of the driveway, and another couple immediately to the left of the driveway, to ensure that you're going to have adequate site distance in both directions. So those are the... So those are the, those are the technical factors that we think operate against this application. But with regard to the right-of-way, clearly the application doesn't meet that requirement without the grant of a waiver. So as this plan is currently constituted, we think you have to deny it.
Is it, is it better, is it better, in your estimation and your client's estimation, that they do the plan by right and take all the trees down? And, because by right, they can do it. Is that a better, is that a better proposition for you and your clients?
I don't think it's entirely clear that they can do the plan with three-lot subdivision because the, if you look at the building envelope on lot three, it's going to push it at least 15 feet further back.
Yeah, but as long as it stays within, stays within these setbacks, he can push it as far as he needs to, to push it back.
Well, but the, if you look at the configuration of lot three, it narrows significantly because of the national, because of the natural shape of the property as you go toward the rear of it.
Yeah, but then that gives them a hardship.
I don't think it gives them a hardship, no. That, I don't, I don't believe that's a hardship that gets you a third lot.
I guess, I guess what I'm driving at is, is that I, I think there's enough here that some kind of compromise can be, can be arranged between the builder and, because I, I think if, if, from the plans that I have witnessed tonight, and it's kind of hard to see them because our, our computers are out, but from what I can see, it, it would be more desirable to have his plan than the by-right plan. Now, if, if he can do that by-right plan, short of whatever Pendott would not let him do, and it is only 10, if it's 10,000 square foot per lot, and he's got 1.4 acres, I mean, he, he can put three houses there.
I don't disagree that he has enough land, he has enough land.
And his plan seems to be, I would think, if I were a neighbor, it seems more desirable than what he can do by right. Sometimes that happens, in my opinion.
I, I, I don't, you know, I understand, but I think also the safety element of this has to come into consideration. And in the area where you're about to expand the trail, the township needs to have the flexibility to implement safety measures that are going to have, have, have an impact.
Well, there's a walkway across the street from this property. It's already there. I mean, aren't there other less burdensome things that the township could do to get people across Radnor Chester Road without inflicting an 80-foot right-of-way on one property? It's a theoretical right-of-way anyway.
Well, and, you know, I should also mention that there are people who are going to come to use the trail, who are going to be on that same east side of Radnor Chester Road. And so they're going to need to have a safe way to get to the trail without having to cross Radnor Chester Road at some point. So you, and, and then you have, you know, high school students who are coming from that side as well.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
You're representing a number of the neighbors of, of the, of the subject property.
Right.
So if you're talking about, if the Board does not provide the waiver, and so obviously we're going to require developer to build the, you know, or to widen the road theoretically, what's going to end up happening? He's going to be pushing the footprint back for all three properties. So the question I have is that for the neighbors in the audience, would they, are they, would they prefer to have properties being closer to their own personal homes and their, and their property lines, rather than basically doing with what he's, the developer's asking for?
Well, I don't think it's going to bring it, those houses, much closer to anybody's homes, but-
Setting it back at least, if, you know, with, if we grant, with what you're saying, 15 feet, everything has to be kind of reconfigured.
Well, I, the other thing I should point out too, and I probably have mentioned this before, but I want to make sure that we're clear about it, the, the additional right-of-way does not automatically implicate the widening of the road. The additional right-of-way is to allow latitude for safety measures to be put in place. And I think, I think there has to be a balancing between the safety measures and possibly in the locations of the house. I'm, the homes, I'm not entirely sure that as this subdivision is configured, that it can be built the same way if the additional 15 feet of right-of-way is provided.
Well, I, I just, what I'm, what I'm troubled with, and, and I drive up and down Radnor Chester Road every day. I live in Newtown Square, so that's my go-to road. So, and I understand with, if I was living there, why, what my personal view would be in with regard to the density versus, as you say, across the street from Radnor Chester Road, you got more of a, smaller lots, more of a denser neighborhood. And I think it's like you are, you know, in my mind, you know, you are changing the, the, the feel of the immediate area because they are stately older homes, beautiful, they've been there for, for decades. And it is going to change the feel of it. But what I still don't understand is that the developer has, can do this by right, and by, with what you're asking the Board to do, you're basically pushing those three homes back closer to, you know, the other, you know, the neighbors' lots. And so I just want to understand what their view is with regard to this. Would they want to have a home, you know, 15 feet closer to, to their own existing homes?
Well, look, I think ideally, the, the neighborhood would prefer a two-lot subdivision to a three, but I don't entirely agree that this plan is buildable as a three-lot subdivision if the additional 15 feet of right-of-way are there, because the building envelope on lot three would shrink substantially, and it narrows as you go toward the rear of the property. If you look at the configuration of the building envelope on the plans, it makes it far more difficult. You could not move that house to the rear of the property as the lots are currently configured.
Is it possible to get that drawing up that he already provided, the one that you're referring to? Can we put that up? Because that one shows that it does. I'm just trying to understand what the conflict is.
We configured all the lots to get them, push them back a little bit.
Can you pull it in deeper, closer, please? We're kind of watching on the big screen as well. In the back?
Bring it, could you enlarge it? Can you zoom in better for us, please? Great. All right, thank you.
So could I address you for a minute? Okay.
My neater way to look at it is on here, you know, I drew the 15 feet mark. You can see there's envelopes left. You're right, Jim, this one just gets smaller.
It shrinks, right.
But you can fit a house, because the lots are so big, you know, compared to what we've got.
But again, the, on lot three in particular, those trees are primarily to the, to the rear of the lot. And it's not going to be possible, possible to put a house to the rear of the lot the way that lot is currently configured. So if you add the additional 15 feet of right-of-way, it's not necessarily going to cause the, the destruction of all these trees. In fact, it's almost certainly not because you, there's not adequate lot width at the rear for a building envelope to put a house.
Are these lots there now? Is this, is this, is this the tax parcels? Or is this, are you, are you re-subdividing it?
Pardon? I think I must have my microphone.
Is this, is this existing tax parcels? Is this existing three lots?
The deed has three premises, but I believe they're very tiny little slivers, so it's really a three-lot subdivision, I think. It's one lot, but again, it's owned our three, 10,000 square feet. Our lots are 16,000, 14,000, almost 15,000. We have so much extra room, it's not going to stop the project to have more right-of-way or even the street widening.
Let me just say something here. The, the drawing that's in the packet that we received, there's two drawings, but the one that, that shows the three properties, unfortunately, the old house is still there. We don't, we haven't, we haven't seen this, this plan or a plan where that middle house has moved forward and the, I presume the road hasn't changed. We haven't seen that. Now, has, has the staff reviewed these by-right drawing plus the other drawing?
No, we haven't. The only, the only plan that we reviewed was the plan that came in with the original application.
And that's the one that's got the old house still sitting on the property?
No, there was a revision that took that house out and put three new houses.
Is that the, is that this plan or is that a different plan?
It's not this plan, it's, it's the previous plan.
The one that's, the color plan, the overhead shot that he had, this one?
We reviewed the entire set, so that's just one sheet in the entire set.
I, I understand. Okay. So essentially, you reviewed a series of plans that depicts something like what you showed.
I believe that's the one, it looks like that, yeah. George, can you, can you confirm that that's the plan that was in the application?
Yeah, that's the one. It was revised a few times, and I believe Roger reviewed the, that one where the, as Tom said, the house was being demolished.
This, when you reviewed this particular plan, the one that's, or, or a series of plans, that's displayed on the screen at this, at this point, that, there, nothing changed in terms of waivers that were needed. The waivers that you perceived were needed are the ones that are reflected in your December 30th, 2019.
Correct, everything's listed, everything's listed in my letter, correct.
Okay, next. I just wanted to verify that, thanks.
The, the plan that I would refer you to, that I think is most revealing and showing what would happen to lot three with the additional right-of-way, is the subdivision plan that's part of the plan package that's before the township. And I could, I can try to put it on here.
It's this one here, is it, Jim? It's up there now?
No.
No?
No, I'm looking at something that's, that's engineered and drawn to scale.
So this is, well, it's the same plan, we just have a rendered drawing of it.
If you can, yeah. So that's, if you look at lot three, which is closest to the trail. Oh, sorry. If you, if you look at lot three, which is closest to the trail, and that right-of-way line goes back another 15 feet, it's going to significantly narrow that. You'll notice how the building envelope shrinks from the middle of the lot to the rear to the point where it's essentially not viable.
We completely shifted to lot numbers.
From that plan?
From that plan, yeah. That's the plan. I don't know why this is so complex.
So that plan's not before the township anymore?
That plan is. Then we drew a plan that showed the right-of-way, which I've showed now three times, which is this.
Might have to show it a fourth time, okay?
Yeah, because it's not drawn to scale, so it's a little hard to-
I wish I could both these on at the same time.
This doesn't show the building envelope, so this is why-
This lot, lot three got significantly wider so we didn't push the house back. If you look at lot one and lot two, there's a little job and we kind of did a little dig here, we moved this one over, we, this one stayed the same, this one moved over. Lot three got larger. So we did this to show that we could do the subdivision with the increased right-of-way. We don't really want to do this plan. We want to do this plan because it's fully engineered, we've already set it in, and the only difference is it's gotten a little bit less of right-of-way. So there's still plenty of room to do a walkway or anything you want to do to go up to the Blue Ridge Trail, but this is a completely different plan than this one.
Just want to point out, where, where, we-
Just point out, where's the, where's the trail? Take, take that white one away, okay? Where's, where's the trail in reference to this?
Right along the boundary of lot three.
Okay, thank you.
The trail's here.
Okay, thank you. And here's the, here's the walkway over here.
Yeah, the trail will come right along the boundary of lot three. That's where it's going to go.
This shows where the walk, where you have to go up and over Radnor Chester Road, right on your property.
So this is the latest, the latest plan? Yeah.
So they're no longer tunneling under, so the trail extension, we're going to have to-
Excuse me, I have to, are you, you're going to, you're going to- Yeah, you have to down by yourself.
I'm, I'm going to ask him to speak.
The plan that Lisa Stokes just brought me is a plan for the trail extension, which shows that it will go over Radnor Chester Road and run along in here. So there's, there will be a walkway across Radnor Chester Road, and that will run right on the boundary of lot three.
Well, if that's the case, how, how will an expanded right-of-way affect that? You're walking straight across the road, it looks like, and, and onto the other side where the trail is or will commence?
Well, again, you're trying to get people to the trail safely from, from both sides of the road, and if you, if you have the right-of-way, you have the latitude to come up with safety solutions on the east side of Radnor Chester Road, so that-
What would some of those safety-
What are your suggestions?
Let me give you, let me give you an example. You have, you have somebody who lives on Chulane, and they want to use the trail extension that runs to the east of Radnor Chester Road. So where they want to get to the trail is right about where it, where it meets Radnor Chester Road. If, if they, under the current configuration, if they wanted to use the pathway on the west side, they would have to cross Radnor Chester Road someplace to the north of the trail and then come back across Radnor Chester Road to use the trail. That's hazardous, unduly so. So if you want to maximize the ability of people to use the trail safely, you're going to need latitude to improve the area to the east side in the area of the 117 property.
So is the adjacent landowner giving up a right-of-way?
Which adjacent landowner?
The one on Chu, Chulane.
Well, no, not, but because there's no, there's no plan before the township that allows it to take it.
So it's a bit irrational to have one property with this widened right-of-way that you're claiming there people are going to get to. I think it's really unsafe to have people on both sides of the road. We should have a place where people cross and it's clear where they cross, not have people on both sides.
Well, I don't know-
But in, in addition, you have a complete drop-off at the property.
That's correct.
It's never going to be built.
Well, that's why you need the 15 feet.
You'd have to put an entire giant fill to make a sidewalk on this side when there's a, when there's already one on the other side of the street. Why would you do that?
Well, I think you would do it to ensure that people can get there from that side of Radnor Chester Road.
So the only people that really would be getting there would be the people at this property, and I assume that they would put somewhere over by lot three, a door, you know, going out the, the fence to go to the trail like everyone else has.
I mean, you know, ultimately, the township's going to have to come up with solutions for making sure people can get to the trail safely on both sides of Radnor Chester. And if you give up the right to the, if you give up the right-of-way in the area of this property, you're ultimately negating any chance of that happening.
See, my, my take on this from listening to this back and forth is that there's two things at work here. One is, the safety issue is a pre-existing condition that Radnor should address regardless of whether property's being developed or not, and if there's a single-family house there, then they, then this plan should, your plan is, you should be arguing about it before this development. I think, I think it's two separate issues. I think, I personally, I think it's unfair to the developer, this idea that the safety is on him. The safety of this property is not changing because two houses are being added. That's not going to change the safety issue. And I think you're, you're confusing, you're confusing the, the complete, the complete idea of this proposal is being confused by that. And I just don't like, I don't like the way the safety issue is blended here. It's, it's a Radnor problem, it's not his problem.
It appears to me that you're asking that this particular property that the developer has the right to develop under the zoning, as I understand it, is a pretty heavy burden to be laying on one person or one, one entity that wants to develop this property that he has the right to do, against a, a bet on some future needs that the township may or may not have regarding this trail. And that, that's where I'm having the larger problem here, especially when at the end of the day, Radnor Chester Road is going to look exactly like it looks right now. I mean, and maybe there's some other solutions to control the speed, to calm the traffics. I'm not an expert in that area, but it just seems that what happens 300 further feet down beyond this property, if somebody wants to develop that property, I, I don't know what the, you know, what the, I was trying to pay attention to see what the lot sizes look like, but, you know, it's a, it's, it's not impossible that somebody will want to develop two houses on a, on a, on a property down there. But it is, to my way of thinking, asking a lot to have this particular, not grant this particular waiver, where waivers do get granted on a fairly regular basis, simply because at some point in the future, the township may want to have some additional property to do something with that there's no plans for right now, and there may never be any plans. no plans for right now, and there may never be any plans, and when there's a walkway all the way, already on the other side of the road, where there's room to put a walkway, and a reasonably substantial one from what I can see on the photographs.
If you have anything else to add, please do so.
That's all I have to add, and I appreciate the consideration of the planning commission. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, there's more folks in the audience. If you're representing, if you're, if you're representing to us, that you've spoken, counselor, on behalf of all of them, that's fine. If there's someone who is not being represented by you, wants to come up and say something, but please, no repetitions, please come on up and identify yourself.
All right. Good evening. I'm Lisa Matty, and I'm the current homeowner of 117 South Radnor Chester Road. And I bought it 20 years ago, loved it, loved the area, loved the property. And I'm saddened by what's going to happen, but when I purchased that, I knew it was zoned R3. It was sort of my plan to keep it, maybe sell part of it off. Someday it was going to be my retirement. So, I'm sort of a little bit relieved to hear what you said about the safety issue, because I had that safety issue the whole time I've lived there, and I don't want to think that that's going to be part of precluding me from being able to keep my home as zoned R3, as I originally intended to buy it, or for me to lose an opportunity to sell my property. I know that there's at least four entities in the room, not, not counting, I'm sorry, a little emotional about this, not counting Mr. Bentley, that have given me offers over the years for my home. And I entertained in each and every one of them, and these are all people that are local to the neighborhood. Unfortunately, they weren't even adequate, and I'm not, I'm not blaming anyone, but I also concerned about some motives there, too. So, I just, you know, it was, they looked at it as a darling home, and so did I. So I'm sure that they wanted to purchase it, and renovate it, and make it a nice little house. But, again, it wasn't something that I could, could do based on what the value of the property is, and based on the opportunities. So, I say all that because I think it's important to know that that's what I bought it for, and I don't want to think this zoning is going to be reversed on me and become something less.
I have just one item I'd like to talk about. My name is Jim Slattery, and I'm a neighbor here. One thing, just to make sure people are aware of, right here, where the 15-foot setback is, there's a complete drop down about 25 feet to the existing rail, the existing trail. And, so what they're saying is, they're building right up to the very, very edge before this very steep drop. And I just think that's a real safety concern, 15 feet just off of that, and I think that's something you should be aware of before this plan, or even the one where they push it back further, is, they're, they're trying to stuff as many houses in as they can, I understand, but that's a real safety issue, I think. It's, again, a very significant drop down to a stonebed railroad track.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just think that, you know, in situations like this, we try and encourage people to come to an understanding of what the other group is looking for, because when you have a buy-right situation, the person can develop, and in that case, we like to see neighborhoods try and work out some suggestions that help the buy-right situation work best for everybody. I think after hearing the testimony of both, I'm inclined to say that I still don't quite understand what the neighborhood wants. I understand some of their concerns about safety, site distance, right-of-way, but they've all been addressed in the literature here. So if there's something that this neighborhood would like to see, to make this a better scenario for them, could that be explained to us in a quick little bit? I don't understand what it is yet. So I'm having a hard time understanding how to pull this together until I hear what it is that you're looking for.
I think he made it pretty clear that looking for 15-foot...
Are they just looking for two houses, or is it three?
Yeah, that's, exactly. We don't know.
Right.
He threw that piece in after he told the three concerns.
I, it's a difficult thing to explain, and to encapsule, encapsulize, but basically, I think the neighborhood is very concerned that this is an overdevelopment of this piece of property. So that's kind of point one. And, point two, because of the traffic issues, and the pedestrian and bicycle issues that are going to arise in this area, there needs to be an ability to make the whole situation safer. And our concern on that score is that once the township relinquishes its right to insist upon the right-of-way, its options in implementing safety measures are going to be substantially limited. And then, of course, the other thing we're concerned about is, I mean, I know you're, you're only adding two houses here, but that driveway exit from the current, the current driveway exit from the property onto Radnor Chester Road is not safe. And you do have this issue, and I think the review letters make it clear, that it's not yet been established to the satisfaction of the township's consultants, that you have the required site distances on Radnor Chester Road from that driveway as you pull out.
That was the last comment on page 2 of 2, of how they could obtain that. So I think they did fulfill that.
Well, it's, they had, they don't know yet, because the trees haven't been cut down. What the, what the review letters say is, that if you look to the right toward the, to the north, toward Lancaster Avenue, they think that if you take those two trees down, it will improve the site distance to the point where it meets the required 275 feet. But we don't know that yet, because the trees are still there.
So you're proposing, you know, what would make your neighborhood happy would be to move all the houses back, cut the trees down, and that would, that would solve, and that would give you all the safety things that you think the township needs to address, and that is what you want?
Well, no. Again, I think it's not clear that you can, that the way these lots are configured, I understand that Mr. Bentley has suggested that there's a reconfiguration, which would create...
Can we just interrupt for a second? We really can't decide this on what doesn't appear to be clear. I mean, we, if you had some hard data, that this, that this can't be built and stay within the code, that would be one thing, but we can't, honestly, we can't, we can't come up to a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners based on a feeling.
I'm not, we would not ask you to do that. But if you look at the plan that Mr. Bentley put up, in reconfiguring the lots to allow for a pushed-back house on Lot 3, you're then creating three irregular lots in terms of shape. So he would have to jog the line between lots 1 and 2 to tighten, and frankly, if you look at the side yard setbacks on Lot 1 as proposed in the plan, it's not entirely sure he's, he's got enough room to do that. But, anyway, you'd have to jog that lot line, then you'd have to also change the lot line between 2 and 3, to widen 3 so that you could push the house back.
I understand what you're saying, but my point is that you have an opportunity right now to ask for something, before he gets a buy-right. What do you want to ask for? Do you see my point?
Yeah, I think we want additional right-of-way.
Okay, that's all I'm asking for.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I move that we accept the minor subdivision, minor, final minor subdivision plan with the approval, approvals they need from PennDOT. Any trees, they need to go in front of the tree board and get it that, and any additional needs for the staff?
I would also want to add to that, if I, and I, maybe I can ask George to clarify something, but I, I think I got the sense that they're prepared to donate five feet.
Well, that's part of that same thing. The five feet, the five additional feet for right-of-way, his, his portion of the 40-foot right-of-way, the additional five feet, so his side's going to be 25 feet, the west side will be 20 feet, and there'll be no cost to the township for that five feet.
And, and I would add to that, conditioned upon meeting the consultant's letters.
Right.
So you want to try that one again, or did somebody get you? I think you put it starting again.
Please do. How about the right-of-way?
I can have a cut out, Charlie.
Be approved of the minor, final subdivision plan, okay, with the approval from staff on any of the waivers that are necessary that he has presented, three waivers, he has, I think, two or three. Also, the approval from PennDOT, that may be necessary for anything you need to do along that roadway. Also, the approval of the tree, the tree committee, if any trees need to go down, due to the fact that they need to increase to 275-foot right-of, site plans to the north, I think it was to the north, and any additional needs that the staff may seem, deem necessary. Also, the five feet right-of-way, that they will give, they will, they will allow an additional five foot of right-of-way on their portion of the property, which is the east side, you're on the east side, correct, at no cost to the township.
Approved minor subdivision, waivers, PennDOT, shade tree commission, additional needs, and the five-foot additional right-of-way.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Six. All opposed? Two opposed. So the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number, item number four on the agenda this evening is an ordinance of Radnor Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending the township zoning ordinance to allow townhouse developments in certain areas of the C3 service commercial district, and to provide regulations therefore.
Evening. I'm Nick Canelli, representing the applicant here. You, you have seen this before. We have gone through long explanation for it. Unlike the prior case, the neighbors are all in favor of it. Remember, this is a C3 zoning area in the North Aberdeen section of Wayne. It is to permit townhome development in the C3 district under certain restrictions. The last time you saw it, you saw the draft that I had prepared, you had directed the solicitor's office to come up with some definition of townhome. So the only real difference that you, that is in this ordinance, as opposed to what you initially saw, was a definition of townhome, and some other restrictions that Mary had placed into the ordinance. So, that's really where we stand with it. The board, I believe, requested that I come back to you, come back to you, since there were some changes in the ordinance, and it was, it was also sent to Delaware County Planning Commission. I don't believe they've come back with anything yet, but it is almost exactly similar to what you've seen before. There's really no changes, there's no changes in the plan that was being proposed. It's just a matter of clarification of some, some of the items in the ordinance.
You saw, I think, you've been made aware of an amendment to the definition of a townhouse?
Yes.
Okay.
And there was one other thing on that, John, that I just handed to Mary on it, that, I believe you have, if I may say, but I think it's the amendment, I think I'm aware of it.
It's the, this one right here. Just for the record, the amendment, the amendment is to...
It's to the definition of townhome.
So that would be article, there'd be 280-4, capital B, definitions, item 4, or subparaphrase 4, townhouse.
And what it currently states, and I'll hand, does the board have this in front?
We have a copy of, we have, I've distributed copies showing the original definition, which was a dwelling on a lot designed and occupied exclusively as a residence for one family, having independent outside access and attached to, but separated from adjoining dwellings by not more than two party walls. Now, the amended version would read as follows, a building, or the amended, or changed definition would read as follows, a building on a lot containing three or more dwelling units, with each dwelling unit designed and occupied exclusively as a residence for one family, having independent outside access and attached to, but separated from adjoining dwellings by not more than two party walls. And it's my understanding that this change was done because there is perceived to be a conflict in the old definition of townhouse with a semi-detached dwelling.
That is correct.
I, I actually, oh, you mean the first definition of townhouse?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, they had state, there was some question on that first definition could have included a twin, a semi-detached, and by adding the number 3 to it, it differentiates it from a townhome. There's also already some restrictions in the ordinance, and as it applies to this, it can have no more than eight townhomes in a row, in a single building. The only change that, to this, and I had handed it to Mary just before I stepped up, we said a building on a lot, when you say, remember, each townhome actually is their own lot, and then you have common area. So in order to kind of avoid any other conflict, I had struck on a lot, so it would now say a building containing three or more dwelling units. That, down, the second definition there, where it says a building, the second definition, on this page. I just, all I did was strike on a lot. It says a building on a lot, and I just struck on a lot, and the reason for that is, each townhome really is on a separate lot. So we didn't want to run into confusion as to what is considered a lot.
Okay, well, you don't think that was adequately addressed on the reference, the reference to the Pennsylvania Condominium and Planned Community Act?
There was, we've gone around, and people were trying to avoid entities coming up and saying it's confusing and ambiguous.
Okay.
So, that is kind of why I struck it. And, I'm probably the, the first person to use that argument that it's ambiguous, so...
Yeah, I'm sure.
You know, try to make it unambiguous.
The words trip out of your mouth very easily. And Mary, you're okay with the...
I'm okay with the change that he proposes in the definition.
Okay. Suppose the only thing that's left for us to do is to vote as to whether or not we recommend approval of this ordinance? Public comment? Sorry about that.
My name is Patty Comlin, I'm a resident. I knew nothing about this until I showed up at the meeting, and to begin with, I think it's ludicrous. It's kind of a backdoor. If you're going to do a townhouse, and it's residential, shouldn't it be under a residential code? Isn't this kind of like a backdoor? But, having said that, just flipping through it, the definitions given here for the requirements under area and width, under, what is this, JA1 requirements, these requirements are completely, townhouse requirements in terms of footage and such like that, don't match C3, nor do they even match R4, residential requirements. So now you're introducing a whole new category? Why would you not, every single one of them? Frontage, it's 65 feet, he has 25 feet, it's 65 feet in C3, in R4 it says 30 feet, this guy's got 20 feet. Side, between buildings, it's 20 feet between, between the two buildings in C3, in R4 it says it has to be 20 feet, he's got 10 feet minimum. Every single one of these is completely different, so I don't know why you would be introducing that. In addition, it's, it's not even matching 280-93 requirement of townhouses, which say you have 20 feet separation. So what's the whole justification for this, except a backdoor for people to put developments where developments were never intended for residential? Also, parking wasn't really clearly spelled out, too. I was a little concerned about that.
Thank you very much. Comments by, or any questions for the, for the person, the individual who's just speaking to us?
How do we address each of her comments?
I'm not really sure.
I'm not sure how to do that.
Specifically, how to address her comments, but I will say this. The fact that the dimensional requirements are different for a townhouse... The fact that the dimensional requirements are different for a townhouse use in the C3 district is not unusual at all. If you look at your ordinance for single-family dwellings or, or twins, depending on what district they're located in, there's all different dimensional requirements. So I, you, you were okay with the concept of this project of townhouses? You saw the plan at a previous meeting, and if you're still okay with that, there's nothing at all unusual about having different dimensional requirements for the same kind of housing units in different zoning districts. And there's nothing, please. There is nothing at all unusual for, in having different dimensional requirements for a use in the same district. So right now, C3 only permits non-residential. So the dimensional requirements for non-residential buildings aren't necessarily going to apply to townhouses. So if you're going to permit townhouses in the C3 district, of course, they're going to have different dimensional requirements.
It's my understanding that there's nothing inherently wrong with having diverse dimensional requirements throughout the township regarding residential buildings. But did you want to add something, ma'am?
Yeah, just the basic definition of a townhouse under 280-93 says 20 feet separation between buildings. This has a requirement of only 10 feet. So not even just within zoning, but the definition of townhouses under 280-93 doesn't match this.
Actually, 280-93 isn't the definition of townhouses. It actually sets forth some dimensional requirements. And prior to this ordinance, the zoning ordinance lacked a universal definition from townhouses. That's why Section 4 was inserted.
And if I can add, parking will be addressed throughout the rest of the code. Nothing's changing with the parking. It'll still be required as it is now.
Just because parking is not specifically mentioned in this particular ordinance, it doesn't mean that there's no parking regulations, as Roger just described.
I think this is just to define if they're going to put, they want to put residential houses in, in the C3 area. I think the tendency in development today is mixed uses, both residential and commercial. So this is now defining what kind of residences, townhouses in particular, that can go into a mixed-use area. Now, now C3 becomes truly a mixed-use area. So they're trying to define that. And I think that's pretty much everything that goes in development today in most places, is the town centers with housing and townhouses and carrot houses and singles. That's how I look at it.
Any further comment?
Just one other thing.
Yes.
There was a reference to 280-93.
280-93 is actually incorporated in this ordinance, and the, and the applicant has to meet the requirements of 280-93.
So why do you have a difference of 10 feet minimum between buildings here?
It's not between buildings, between the property line. It's still 20 feet between buildings. If there was more than one townhome development, they would have to have 20 feet between the buildings, which is what 280-93 provides.
I just haven't heard any justification of why you have this unique category for different types of townhouses than any other buildings that you have within it. So I hear what you're saying about mixed residential, but you're introducing, why not have it meet other requirements? Why not have it meet-
Like what?
What other townhouses? So as I said before, C3 says you have to have 63 from the front, frontage, 65 feet. This says 25 feet. It's 30 feet in R4. Every single one of these things is different than every other. So why, what's the justification of the driving reason of why we have to have looser requirements? Because somebody happened to slip it under C3 and didn't put a townhouse in a residential location?
I, I think, I think the movement of the front yard is kind of what you're talking about. I think that's kind of what they're doing in most, in the business overlay. They moved everything closer to the highways, to move the properties closer to the streets, okay, and getting parking off the front and moving it to the rear. And, and I think you're seeing that, like I said before, I think you're seeing that, how, how townships are developing everywhere, is the whole, the whole object of mixed-use and commercial properties closer to the front seat, front, the front yards. And in residential, you want a larger setback. And, and I think they're just trying to keep the setbacks even as you go down the street. I, I think that's kind of what they're looking at.
Okay. Would someone care to make a motion?
I move we, I move we accept the ordinance as, as presented and amended with four.
My second.
All in favor? Looks like it's unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. Is there any old business, any new business? So I guess we're adjourned.
I move we adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.